And our agenda is, asked me to call us to order at this point in time, so I shall do so. We are going to start with the pledge of allegiance, so y'all can mute and stand and recite the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So tonight we have, in our agenda, our next item is citizens comments, and we have one of our citizens here to comment. And her name is Keely Noasaki. And if you would like, at this point, you can unmute. I will just do a very quick reminder. You are only citizens comments, so I don't imagine there'll be repetition. But we do want to still try to stay to the three minute time limit for each comment. So at this time, I will hand over the mic to you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Keely Noasaki. I am a resident of Stowe. I have a son that will be starting kindergarten next week. And I spoke in the last school committee meeting. I, I know there has been a decision made by Commissioner Riley, but I am still refusing to take that mandate in that there are still no science that has been provided of the pros and cons. Even if you go to the DESI website, there is, there are no articles, there is no data that they've provided to make this recommendation. And again, I feel like where there is risk, there needs to be choice. And in addition to that, it's frightening that this decision is being made on a recommendation. The data in our towns, the numbers have been low. And again and again, studies continue to show that children are low risk and their transmission rate is also low. I have some information that I took from the CDC website. In that it said that, I think the number is actually up to 361. So over the last 18 months, 361 children under the age of 18 have died from COVID. So I, that is sad. However, at the same time, over this last 18 months, 49,725 children of that same age range have died from other causes. So the COVID number accounts for 0.6%. So we are basing this recommendation on a very small number. And the risk that these masks could present to our children could be far worse. There's data coming out now. And the science supports that anxiety is an issue. Mental illness across the country is climbing. The suicide rate is climbing across the country and no one is talking about this. All we're talking about is mask, 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 but we're not looking at the long term of what they're going to do to our children. So I understand that we're going to put this mandate into October. But I believe after that, it's scary to, for me as a parent, to think that this is based on a vaccine and that we're waiting for a vaccine for these children. And if there's not long-term data, I don't take a year as long-term data. And that we're going to push for these young children to be vaccinated as a scary thought. But then on that note, if they're not vaccinated, we're saying that these kids need to wear masks for the rest of the year. And I cannot agree with that as a parent, and I feel like I should have a choice as a parent to protect my child, protect their health, because that's my responsibility. That's all I have to say. And I hope that people have looked at the studies. I sent the superintendent, Superintendent Downing, I think 15 different articles. You can call me crazy, but at this point, this is important to me. I'm sure this is important to other parents. Maybe I'm the only one speaking, but this is very important to me. And this is about my child. I know you, many people have children. And that is my life. So this is why I'm fighting so hard to protect my child. Thank you.
Thanks so much for joining us, Rick. Appreciate your perspective. All right, folks. So like I said, that was the only citizen's comment. We're going to move on now to the only item on our agenda, and that is the NRSD masking policy vote. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Downing, perhaps just to give us a little bit of background on the newest happenings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, School Committee. Last week, I gave you all a presentation on my recommendation for how we will open school regarding masking in our environments. And so I won't repeat that presentation tonight. I will only come out to say that it was three days after the meeting that the commissioner came out with a presentation, or came out with a recommendation, excuse me, that very much reflected the recommendation that you saw last week. However, he actually addressed a couple of points that came up in debate. One was the metric for optional masking. And that metric was established at a, at 80% vaccination rate of the school environment. And then also setting the date forward of October 1st. So those are the key elements out of the commissioner's mandate that we received last Friday that we've moved forward with in our reopening plans that were sent out to families today. What I'm, the action that I'm requesting the school committee take tonight is that in our elementary schools, we have preschools of students beginning at the age of three and up. And so what I would ask is that we just expand that mandate to the age of three, because that will then encompass all of the human beings in our environments and visitors were also included in the right commissioner's mandate. So we do not need to take any action on visitors. But I'm just asking for the expansion for ages three and up.
Okay, thank you so much, Kirk. With the, I just want to throw it out to the committee if there are any just clarifying questions before we put a motion on the table, anything that was unclear. What do you think, Amy?
I apologize if I missed this. I'm, so I am unclear as to whether we are voting on the policy that was presented last week. As presented, is that what we're doing?
So, um, I'll see that Kirk presented time around, ended up being very similar to what the commissioner put out as a recommended.
Maybe I'll just listen for the motion. That's fine. I think.
Yeah, yeah, the motion will clear, the motion will clarify for you.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
The commissioner's mandate essentially makes the recommendation I sent out last week. Basically a parallel recommendation. What I'm asking is giving the commissioner's mandate that we make a motion to include ages three and up from that mandate. Because currently the mandate is written for ages five and older.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay. So if everyone doesn't mind, I would like to make a motion. And I move that the Nishoba Regional School Committee adopts the DESI mask requirement expanded to include all students ages three and above for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Let's open it up for discussion if there is any. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just going to follow up where I left off the last meeting. And one of the superintendent's recommendations was that we were going to be looking at, you know, de-masking on a school by school basis and what have you. My question then to the superintendent would be, is that still part of the overall motion that we're voting on tonight? And the one element that I did raise in the last meeting was that I was personally inclined to allow you to have, superintendent, to have the discretion to make decisions regarding when a particular school would then be relieved of the masking requirement. I think there was some discussion that that type of matter might come back before the committee. Press hours inclined to grant you the discretionary authority to make those decisions. And if that authority is still needed as part of your recommendation, I'd like to know, certainly make a motion in that regard. But before I do that, if that is part of the recommendation, I'd also like to hear from the superintendent whether or not he wants that authority or that he wants to just put it back in the hands of the school committee.
He's gone.
Yeah, hold on. I'm going to let him back in. Darn it, Joe, sorry. Kirk, Kirk, asking a question.
There we go. Mr. Gleason, I would like you to know that my sudden disappearance has no reflection on you or the question you were asking.
Joe, you want to try again?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So superintendent, I don't know how much you heard of what I was asking, but I'll, I'll start from the beginning. I think at our last meeting, there was proposition that as far as, I'll call it de-masking is concerned, that we would be as a district looking at that on a school by school basis. And I had raised the issue at the last meeting that it would be my personal inclination that when it comes to the discretionary authority to determine when it's appropriate for any of our schools to de-mask, that that authority be vesteded with you. Now, I'm, I don't know if that's part of the recommendation that's before the committee right now. If it is, that's fine. But if it's not, I would be inclined to make a motion to amend the recommendation to grant you the authority to make that discretionary decision as we move forward with this. But if I, before I make the motion, I'd like to hear from you whether or not you think it's appropriate that you be given that authority or whether you would prefer it be, or remain with the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. I consulted with the Mass Superintendent Association, with other superintendents. But we also got some, a little bit of guidance and signals from the commissioner as well. So as we vote policy, that is definitely something we should all move forward to as a school committee regarding policy and voting as policy. But what we're also going to get is the commissioner is going to be reviewing the data for the next phase of the recommendation. I believe that date is September 22nd as well. So it's at that point, typically we have some conferences with the commissioner before that in order to gain an understanding for that. So I think your question's a good one, but I would say that is not a question we need to address tonight because we'll get further guidance from the commissioner on that.
Thanks, Kirk. I will say too, guys, that I spoke with Dorothy Presser about this as well, and she that because it's a matter of policy, we could Kirk the autonomy to do or create changes in the policy over time. But that he would be doing so basically with our approval. And so any decision Kirk would make would be our de facto decision. And she actually advised us not to give that kind of authority over when it comes to policymaking. That was just her advice though. So it's, it's actually kind of a moot point at this, at this though, because the recommendation includes that benchmark in it. What other questions, Amy?
Yeah, so the benchmark is 80% of a school reaching vaccination status. Is that including faculty and students? Is that like every person that's in the school or?
Yes, that's right. It includes adults and children together.
Okay, so then there's the policy that stands in our our existing policy requires masks. Does this, does, does this supersede the existing policy? I think that's where I'm a little still hung up because we have a policy that's on the books that requires.
So the policy that we, the policy we managed last year was just for last year.
It expired.
Thank you. That is where I was confused. So then this would be adopted as our our policy, this DC recommendation, right?
I don't think we have a choice. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Steve.
I don't think we have a choice here. This is what the Department of Education has told us will be happening. And the only thing that we're looking at tonight is to stretch that down to pre-K because the department policy goes from K above. And over and above that, my, my only question would be, well, what happens at middle school and what happens at elementary school and K and pre-K as we approach October 1st? That's, that, that becomes another issue for the state, for the DESI to to deal with us at that point, because you're not going to have 80% in elementary school because they can't get the vaccine. So what, what exactly are we not looking beyond October 1st at this point?
Kirk, do you want to respond to that?
I believe the way the commissioner wrote that was to say that the the option would be there beginning October 1st. And that's what the guidance is going to get when, to see if the mask mandate needs to be extended past October 1st. So the way the commissioner's mandate is written extends beyond October 1st. But school environments that meet the 80, 80% threshold can offer optional masking under the way it's currently written. September 22nd is when he will bring advisement to the State Board of Education if that October 1st deadline should be extended down the year for all environments.
Steve, follow up?
So yeah, so one, I'm, I'm concerned. I'm not concerned with the high school because they have students of age that can get the vaccine. But the middle school, only seventh and eighth graders, I guess, at this point can get the vaccine. You have sixth graders in there. It, it, it doesn't sound like you're going to be able really to do away with the mask mandate on October 1st for those, for those institutions or those grades. And for elementary and K and pre-K, they're going to be masked, period. Because they can't get to 80% in, if he continues the policy of 80%. Am I correct on that?
You are correct, Mr. Rubenstein, unless at a future date, the commissioner receives the entire mandate.
So what you're, so what you're saying is that those schools, let's say, let's just pick on the elementary schools. The elementary schools will not become unmasked on October 1st, period.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other deliberation?
Just need to make sure you all can hear me.
Got it.
Okay. So a couple of questions. And I'll just kind of wrap it up in, into one statement. You can answer both of them. Is there a place where these data points will live publicly so that communities can sort of track our vaccination rate? I'm not talking about names, just by school by school basis. So that, you know, if we're at 70%, we're at 60%, we're at 20%, at least it gives community members an idea of how close or how far we are from reaching that threshold. That was my first question. And then the second question is sort of related to Steve's question if, if and when that mandate gets rescinded. And I know that this is speculative. And we have some discretion in our mask policy. Will there be given special consideration for our lower children first, sort of phasing in the release of that requirement? Or will it be en masse, school-wide basis only?
That's a good question, Mr. Horace. I think that will introduce debate that we'll have to look into and, and look to the Department of Public Health and then the Nishoba Regional Public Health Department to get their guidance from. I would take that guidance from our medical professionals and health experts to help us host that debate. In regards to your first question, my bi-weekly school committee report that you'll be receiving will have those updated data sets as, as we move forward. So Ms. Gobeki has access to those data numbers as a public health professional. So that's how we know that currently Nishoba High School is at a 74% rate. Our faculty number is a little bit trickier because we have them as a whole system. But Ms. Gobeki will put forth a methodology where she'll be able to extract that school by school to combine it with the student vaccination rates to get the total rate for the building. So what I'll be able to report back to is the total vaccination rates of each school by the number of human beings as opposed to adults, children.
Thank you.
Any other people want to weigh in? I think I see Steve's hand.
Okay, I just, just to make it absolutely clear, not only to us, but to the people watching. The October 1st deadline of, and of having 80% by October 1st will allow us to have a, a, not a mandatory, but a voluntary masking policy, but that's only at the high school. Because 12 and under cannot, there is no vaccine. So if there are groups of parents who are saying, oh, we'll get our kids in Mary Rolinson, for example, up to 80%. They can't because there are no vaccines for the sixth grade level in the middle schools. So you're never, you're not going to get that 80% and therefore it's my understanding from, from what Kirk said is that that mandatory mask will continue for everything from pre-K through eight. And I want that clearly understood.
Yes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Keeping in mind, guys, that middle schoolers, graders do turn 12 in sixth grade. So we could have a point at which the middle school does meet the benchmark for our middle schools, but the elementary school, it's very much like that, Steve, unless things change in the middle of the year at the state level. And the commissioner comes back with something different. Any other comments or questions? Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I apologize for belaboring the point, but I've been sitting here ruminating on this. And I guess I'm just not really understanding the mechanics of how this all works. So following up a little bit from Mr. Mr. Rubenstein was saying, we just concentrate on the high school for the moment. And we get to a point where you reach that particular benchmark after October 1st. At which point, the policy would allow the district to then invoke a voluntary or discretionary masking policy and let parents make the decision whether or not their children will be then wearing a mask or not. So the mechanics of it is, is that once the particular school reaches that particular benchmark, then that comes back to us for a vote as to whether or not we are going to de-mask that school. Is that how, because the issue I have is that it comes back to us, it comes, it's been packed in a form of recommendation from the superintendent. It then becomes a motion, it then becomes subject to deliberation and a vote. And, you know, anything can happen once the eleven of us get our hands on it. So I guess if that's what we're bargaining for, I just want to know that before I vote. So is that how it's going to work, Superintendent Downing?
I think that is how it's going to work. I think we're just going to have to measure what is happening. This is, the standards is being set forth by the commissioner and how he is working with the State Board of Education, which is why they'll be revisiting that in September to decide what they do beyond October 1st. So I think what we would be doing is replicating what is set before us at the state level.
I guess just my concern is, is that I, I just fear putting it back before us and having us continue the matters or get engaged in other issues attended there too. And it just, it just seems simpler to me that, that a decision from the superintendent's office relative to de-masking would be more efficient. But if it's the committee's will that we do it this way, then so be it.
Although Kirk, if you don't mind me injecting, this man, this policy would give you the discretion to move to a voluntary masking in any building that meets the threshold. That's my understanding.
Well, this policy, if this policy is rescinded, then we're left to just create a policy. And that, that's what's left to be a mystery for me, Madam Chair, is once the next guidance comes out from the commissioner to the State Board of Education. We've all dealt with the shifting sands that from the Department of Education in the past year and have had to adapt at moments' notice at times to the conditions on the ground. So that's where, yes, we are going to have to wait and see what those things look like. If they were just to pull the masking mandate entirely, well, then we would, in order to continue masking, we would have to then develop a masking policy and vote it into place at that time.
Amy?
Yeah, I just think it's worth clarifying, like we, there's a mask requirement that has been issued per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education through October 1st. Right? We, we don't get to, we don't get a say in that. What we're being asked to do is extend that beyond, down to, from five or three down to the preschool level. So I, I just feel like the conversation is getting a little convoluted because the and I want to make sure people who are watching the meeting understand that we're not voting to accept, like we, we don't really get a vote in whether the elementary, middle school and high schools students and staff wear a mask through October 1st, anyway, right?
Thanks, Amy.
And the motion is purely to extend it to the lower age groups.
It's to accept the commissioner to, yeah, implement the commissioner's mandate and expand to age three.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Before we vote? Yeah, go ahead, Sharon.
So this isn't necessarily a question as much as it's a comment, I think. Trying to follow up on what Amy was saying and, and what we're all, I think, trying to balance out here is that we put it out to the community and, and asked for input and feedback about masking and a policy that we, that was presented last week that we had considered just to be the Nishoba policy. I know I read each and every response, every email that was sent, every response on the Google Doc. All of the people that came and presented public comments. And, and I think I speak for all of us when, when I say I read all of that. I think everybody read all of that and appreciated all of that feedback and heard all of that feedback that was given. So I, I think one of the things that we're feeling very cautious about right now is that we are wanting to be responsive to our communities and we are wanting to be clear that we heard what the messages that we received, we heard what people had to say. And there were people that were very much in favor of the masking policy and people that were very much not in favor of that. But that at this point, But that at this point, it's not our decision to mask or not to mask, right? At this time, that decision is being made at the state level. Um, and I, I think that's the part where I'm sensing this hesitancy that, that we really want everybody to be aware that we didn't ask for this feedback and then ignore it. We asked for this feedback and we listened to it, we read it, we, we heard it. But our, our hands are tied at this moment in time. And I think our hands are tied is not quite the right word I wanted to say. I, I think what I'm saying is that we are now presented with something that is mandated or placed upon us by the Department of Education. So the choice is not to be made right now.
Thanks, Sharon. Uh, everybody ready to, oh, Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, thank you. Um, just a, a question for the superintendent. I'm wondering if you could, um, provide some insight as to, um, why, um, you felt that there was a need to expand this down to our three-year-olds rather than to follow the, uh, the, the mandate to the letter of the mandate? Why, why do you feel like it's necessary to go beyond that and extend it to our youngest learners?
A good question. Uh, it basically comes down to we share that environment with all of our students. Not all, uh, school districts carry a preschool and not, and many that carry preschool do not carry them within actual the bricks and mortars of their elementary schools, middle schools or high schools. Since we share those environments, um, and the policy is ultimately written to, uh, the metrics of all the people in the environment, it, it seems to make sense to bring it to all the people that would be in the school. Uh, to that point, preschoolers are different. They have other challenges and our teachers are accustomed to that, which is why there are, uh, exceptions within the governor's, uh, within the Commissioner's mandate. And our, our preschool teachers would pay particular, uh, attention to that in, in coaching, assisting, teaching kids along with that. Uh, I, I will say that, um, uh, in our preschools last year, uh, students were masked. And, uh, it was, uh, the, the policy was met, uh, virtually without event.
All right, guys, I think we are perhaps ready to vote. If I'm incorrect on that, let me know. All right, so I shall call the roll. Here we go, uh, in favor of the motion to adopt the Commissioner's order expanding to grade, or excuse me, age three for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Windsor?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Eckel?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Horace?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Did I get everybody? All right. The vote is unanimous. I am willing to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Amy. Joe?
Yes.
I say yes. Karen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
That'll do it, friends. See?